Zoom meeting up and running, but I think we've got everything working now. So I'd like to ask you to start by joining me with standing and for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Taking me on a trip, Todd.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
The host would like you to unmute your microphone. You can press star six to unmute. The host would like you to unmute your microphone. You can press star six to unmute.
I'd like to have roll call, please, if we could.
You are unmuted.
Pete Hamel.
Tom Rooster.
Here.
Brad Hand.
Here.
Wayne Barahona.
Here.
Tom Eggers.
Sit here.
All right. Next on the item, uh, next item on the agenda is the approval of our agenda. I'll entertain a motion for that.
So moved.
A second. Roll call, please.
Kent.
Aye.
Rooster.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Okay. At this point, we move on to our public forum. I'd like to read a few statements here before we start. Uh, and ask that as, uh, if you're here to speak, you would raise your hand to be recognized and then come to the podium, state your name and address. If you have any handouts, please give them to the city clerk before the meeting. Be concise and limit your time to four minutes. You may not save your time for later or yield the remainder of your time to someone else. And after speaking, please be seated. If you are addressing a matter on the agenda, state the agenda item you are speaking about, and if you are speaking on more than one agenda item, arrange your comments in chronological order. Try not to duplicate information that has already been presented. Direct comments to the entire council, not to an individual. Questions and issues raised during this time will generally not be answered at this time. Maintain a courteous and respectful manner. If you are the presenter on an item which has been formally placed on the council agenda, this public forum process does not apply, although you are asked to be succinct in your presentations. Iowa law requires certain matters to have public hearings which have their own comment periods. Comments pertaining to a public hearing item should be saved for that item, and the four-minute comment period will also apply in that situation. Thank you for all, to all that are attending, uh, this important business meeting, and so are there any public comments at this time? Yes, please step forward to the microphone here, state your name and address, and then you have four minutes.
Thank you. I am speaking-
State your name first, please, and your address.
Thank you. Uh, Mark Wagner.
Okay.
Um, I'm speaking on the 11th Street Rightofway, New Business, number 6E.
Okay. Okay. We are having a public hearing on that item down the road in this, in this meeting, so if you'd like, you could just save your comments at that time for at that time.
Okay.
I will call you forward then.
Thank you.
Okay. Great. Keith, do you have something?
Sheldon Rec Trail. Uh, oh, I, we have on this agenda, we have on 6E, and, and I'd like to make a comment about that either now or later, whenever.
Let's do it later. Let's say same one he's going to be commenting on, so we'll, we'll have you comment on those at that time.
Ask Todd if-
Todd, do you know of anybody else listening in that would have public, public comments at this time?
So we have like 12 attendees listening in. I just asked them to unmute. I'm not, um, I'm not seeing any action.
Give it just a couple more seconds here. The box just lit up around 324-2382. Who is that?
2382, that's you.
Up here? Okay. All right. All right. Very good. I'm not seeing anybody else comment, looking like they're going to comment, so let's move on then to approval for, of the consent agenda. I'll take a motion for that, please.
So moved.
Support.
Support.
Roll call, please.
Kent.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Rooster.
Aye.
Barahona.
Aye.
All right. That brings us forward to item number 6, 6A. Second reading on the zoning ordinance amendment for, on swimming pool fences. Uh, open the reading at this time. Are there any comments that we received by mail, email, verbal, in the office?
No.
Okay.
If I might, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
So if you'd like, you may approve second reading and waive third, or you may have a third reading if you desire.
This is a second reading. We've had no comments at either meeting at this time, so.
I'd move we, uh, approve this one and waive third reading.
Okay. Okay. Can we vote on that, or do we have to close the public hearing first?
There's no public-
No, public hearing, no, it's just a second reading. Okay.
You can vote.
Yeah, okay. Roll call, please.
Eggers.
Aye.
Barahona.
Aye.
Rooster.
Aye.
Kent. Aye.
All right. Then moving on to the second portion of letter A, the resolution of approval. Uh, since we waived the third reading, we'd take care of that now, I assume, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have a motion for approval on that?
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? Any comments that you have pertaining to that resolution, Sam?
No, sir.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Rooster.
Aye.
Kent.
Aye.
Barahona.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
All right. Moving forward to item B, under New Business, the zoning ordinance amendment on storage sheds.
If I might, Mr. Mayor?
If you would.
If, I would recommend that we approve second reading and not waive for agreeing.
Can you hear me?
Yes, Pete, we do hear you. So, we're just moving on to item 6B of our agenda, dealing with the ordinance on storage sheds. Go ahead, Sam.
Thank you, Mayor.
Pete, what phone number are you?
Hold on. Uh, Pete, what phone number are you calling in on?
0963.
Did you hear that, Todd? 0963 is Pete.
Got it.
Okay. Anybody else have a comment before we give Sam the floor? All right, Sam, the floor is yours.
All right, so, thank you, Mayor. So on item 6B, I recommend approving second reading, but not to waive third reading because there's a pending public hearing on the companion ordinance relating to AC arterial commercial zoning, and that's coming on December 2. So on December 2, you can have the hearing on that item?
Thank you. Give it up.
On December 2, you can have the hearing on that item and approve that one and waive second and third if you'd like, and then approve third reading of this one.
Okay. Everybody understand that? Pete and, uh, Tom, did you hear that explanation from Sam?
Uh, actually, I did not. There was some extraneous noise going on, so.
Basically, what he's saying is-
He felt a background noise.
Go ahead.
I'm trying to mute you.
All the background noise is coming from Pete Councilman Pete Hamel.
All right. Okay. Tom, what Sam is saying is he would recommend, uh, moving forward with the second reading, but wait to approve the resolution until the third reading because there's a, uh, company ordinance regarding the, uh-
Arterial commercial.
Arterial commercial zoning. So we would wait for that, and we could do it all at one shot at that point on our, in our December, first meeting in December.
Thank you. I understand that.
Okay. And Pete, are you following what, what's going on there? I think he muted himself, so, yeah, it looks like he's muted right now, so we're going to assume that he is. So, uh, we've had our second reading. Is everybody in agreement that we'll wait then till December for the other?
I'll move that we accept the second reading and pass it on to third reading.
I'll support.
Roll call, please.
Rooster.
Aye.
Kent.
Aye.
Barahona.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Hamel.
Hamel's muted at this point.
Mr. Mayor, this is Todd. I had to mute Pete again because he's got an extreme amount of background noise. Every time he unmutes himself, it, uh, makes it so nobody else on the, on the Zoom meeting can hear what's going on in the room.
Okay.
So Pete, if you caught that, we need to kill the background noise wherever you're at.
Sam, you have a suggestion?
He can hit star six to unmute. He's probably trying to unmute on his phone. He needs to hit star six.
Pete, if you hear that, you could hit star six to unmute. I'm not seeing any action. We have four affirmative votes, so I think we can just move forward.
You can.
All right. Let's do that. Then on to item C, under our number 6, New Business. A first reading of the ordinance-
Is it any better now?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Oh, it's a lot of background noise, Pete. Okay, give me a couple of minutes. Do you want me to dial back in then?
Sure.
Just collect his eye.
Okay, I'm gonna hang up, Tom.
Okay. All right. Moving on then to item C, the first reading of the ordinance amending provisions in the code of ordinances pertaining to floodplain management. Sam, I imagine you have comments on this?
Uh, yes. Uh, so this is a fairly straightforward ordinance. As the explanation states, Sheldon, Sheldon has been a longtime participant in the National Flood Insurance Program. To remain in good standing with the program, FEMA is requiring the city to update the ordinance prior to the 17th of December. It's a fairly straightforward ordinance. The, the one, uh, point that needs to be worked out that Micah and Todd and I have been discussing is what the expectation is for us as the city to enforce in the two-mile limit. And as most people are aware, there is not a lot of, of floodplain ground in city limits that is owned by property owners other than the city. So that's an issue we hope, hope, hope to have a, a better answer for you on by December 2. Uh, is Micah on?
He was. Micah, can you unmute? Star six. He's listed here, but he's listed also as being muted. I'm not sure what the situation is there. You looking for a comment?
Todd, are you able to unmute him?
Are you looking for me?
Yes, here he is. Good.
Hey, Micah, do you have anything to add to what I just said regarding the exercise of the zoning jurisdiction into the county relating to flood, uh, floodplain ordinance?
No, it, it's an issue you've recognized, and until we get further feedback from the county about a possible solution, we're kind of on hold.
Okay. So I do recommend we proceed with approval of first reading and take this to second reading on the second.
Very good.
I'll make the motion to approve first reading. Side net.
Are there any other comments or discussion on that matter?
Just a point of order. Is there any consideration to the first reading if we don't have all of the information? Do we have to revert back to a first reading once we receive that information that we're waiting on?
I'm not sure. Micah, I would defer to you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Micah.
So if there is any change in what we're doing, um, at most, what it would do is exclude from the ordinance the extraterritorial jurisdiction portion. Um, at least that's my understanding. And, um, the bulk of the ordinance would likely stay the same, so, um.
So the risk is low?
The risk is low, in my opinion.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure that we talked about it before we voted.
No, good question.
All right. Any other comments?
No other comments.
Pardon me, Tom?
No other comments.
Okay. All right. Very good. Then let's move forward to roll call, please.
Barahona.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Rooster.
Aye.
Kent.
Aye.
Hamel.
I don't see-
He does not rejoin the meeting.
I don't think he's back in yet, so.
He's not.
Let's just move forward. Motion carried. All right, then, moving on to item D, consider the request from Ag Partners to vacate and dispose of a portion of West 11th Street and the Railroad Avenue Rightofway. I'd like to open the public hearing on that at this time. And I think you gentlemen are both going to be on the next, you're coming on the next one, correct? Item E, is that correct? Okay.
I believe we might have Dan DeYoung from Ag Partners on. Is Dan, Dan, are you on?
Dan DeYoung is listed as-
Dan is on, he just needs to unmute himself.
All right. Sorry about that. I'm on.
Any comments you'd like to make on this request, uh, regarding the disposal, vacate and disposal of that portion of West 11th and Railroad Avenue?
Well, I guess just from Ag Partners' side, we'd definitely clean up, um, that property so it's all one unit, and at that point, we'd be able to, uh, sell it to the Dykstra family. And, uh, yeah, I guess, from what, I guess initially, from what I understood, um, it was thought that that was vacated-
Correct.
-back in 1994. And, uh, for whatever reason, a portion of it didn't get included in the, in the abstract, I believe.
Yeah, you're right on that, so, yeah, it's basically more housekeeping than anything.
Correct.
So, all right.
Eggers?
Yes.
I'm sorry, who is that?
That's Dan DeYoung with A, uh, with AGP, Ag Partners, excuse me.
Thank you.
All right. Are there any comments, other comments from the public regarding this matter? I see several people listed. If you are wanting to comment on this, you need to unmute and speak up at this time. All right, I'm not seeing anything going on, so, uh, entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved. Support.
Roll call, please.
Hamel.
Aye.
Rooster.
Aye.
Kent.
Aye.
Barahona.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
All right. Uh, then let's move on to that second portion there, considering the resolution to vacate and dispose of the property. Anything you want to comment further on? Any other comments or discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay.
Support.
Roll call, please.
Kent.
Aye.
Rooster.
Aye.
Barahona.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
All right, that motion carries. All right, now moving on to item 6E, the, considering the request from the zoning administrator to vacate a portion of West 11th Street Rightofway, east of Western Avenue and west of Ag Partners. Mark, you were up first, now would be your time to comment if you want to step forward again.
Thank you. My name is Mark Wagner. I am the owner of the property that lies south of 11th Street, east of Western Avenue. I am not opposed to vacating this portion of 11th Street. My concern is the disposal of this property. Currently, my property has been used by others for storing their refuse without my consent. I have been working with Sam, trying to get a resolution from that party to clean it up. However, my only legal access to my property currently is from Western Avenue. The city has never developed the right of way here or on 11th Street. Hence, I cannot even legally drive onto my own property. My only legal access is on foot, jumping over a ditch and a culvert, and that's on the, uh, east side of Western Avenue. Typically, if property is vacated, landowners abutting the vacant right of way are granted a portion of the ground adjacent to their property. Without granting me additional egress on Western, at 11th Street, my property would suffer from the vacancy. My property is the only property adversely affected by this vacancy. Therefore, I am requesting that I be allocated a portion of 11th Street adjacent to my property. To this end, I have enclosed an aerial survey from DGR Engineering. I need 20 feet of the 11th Street vacancy from south to north to meet the City of Sheldon light industrial setback minimum requirements of 10 feet from property lines. This would give me, currently, I only have 20.8 feet cross-section on the, on what is an unimproved drive.
Okay.
This would, I would appreciate to have two more tracks of 10 each, which would give me 40 feet access as depicted on the aerial survey. In perspective, the average two-car driveway is 20 feet wide, and the walking trail is, is required to have a width of 20 feet. The width of 11th Street is 70 feet. If my property, if my request is granted for the 20 feet acceptable egress, the remaining vacancy would still have 50 feet of access on Western Avenue. My plan is to either develop or sell this property. With current setbacks and property as is, the buildable square footage allows close to 10,000 square feet. It's a little over 9,500. Without proper egress, I will suffer hardship, loss in property value, loss of usage, loss of compatibility, et cetera. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mark, for your comments. Keith, would you also like to comment on something here?
Mine is, um, E, 6E, it has to do with the trail easement going through that property that we were authorized to get way back in 2002 when the elevator had a chemical spill or a nitrogen spill. And in the process of the cleanup, they were fined $152,000. And there was a, um, they were, we were, at that point in time, they had some community things that they were pledged to do, and one of them was to give the trail an access from Western Avenue to the depot. And my request is to bring that easement into fruition. I have met with, uh, the Dykstra family yesterday. Uh, we would, stood out there and walked through some of it. We had a couple of options we looked at, but, uh, we decided on a final option, and it's on a map that you received. Uh, and I think that's, uh, I was okay with them. So, uh, I, I, I don't know when this will happen. It won't be a paved, real, uh, ease, uh, lot, trail for now, but, um, you know, hopefully sometime in the near future, a year or two, maybe we can put a gravel in there. We do have some requests from NCC students who'd like to use that to get, they come up to Western Avenue, and then they gotta go through streets to use that to get to the highway or get to the depot, and then they can go downtown or to other places, so that's my comment.
Okay. Thank you, Keith. Any questions for Keith before he gets too far away? Or for Mark with that matter? I didn't really give him the opportunity. All right. Thank you. All right. For those of you that are listening in on Zoom, watching, is there anybody out there who would like to, uh, comment during this time of public hearing? Seeing no one, I think we can close the public hearing. If you want to make that a motion, someone?
Mr. Mayor, we may have one more comment.
Oh, okay.
Matt Dykstra.
All right. State your name for the record, please.
What's that?
You need to state your name for the, for the record.
Oh, Matt Dykstra, owner of IDX Ving and Tiling. We're in the process of, uh, buying, uh, the, the Ag Partners' property, and we have, uh, proposed, uh, we'll grant access to, for the trail, um, to go through our property in exchange for, uh, what's vacated on 11th Street. Um, our goal is to, to obviously develop the property, make Sheldon better. I mean, that's why we're, we wanted to come to Sheldon, and we want to clean up the property, and the neighbors are very disgusted with how everything looks, and, and I guess that's our reason for wanting that property and have direct access to our scale.
Okay.
Instead of having to go, go around the Wagner property.
All right. Any questions for Matt? Thank you, Matt. I think that was probably their last public comment, so now at this time, I'll take the motion to close the public hearing. Motion to close? Roll call, please.
Hamel.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Kent.
Aye.
Barahona.
Aye.
Rooster.
Aye.
Then moving on to subpoint 2, under that E, consider the resolution to vacate, and this is just a motion to vacate. We aren't disposing of the property. We, I mean, there's discussion coming on that, but right now, the only thing, only decision we're making today is to vacate this property. Okay? And there are a lot of options. We can, uh, maybe hear some of those in a little bit here, but I'll entertain a motion then to consider the resolution to vacate.
Make the motion to consider to vacate.
I'll second. Roll call, please.
Rooster.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Kent.
Aye.
Barahona.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
All right. That motion carries. Now, discussing an option for the disposal of the property. And note there, it says a separate hearing will be required at a later date once we come to a decision.
I guess my question is, I, I see Mark's concern about his, um, access to his property there. Um, I do believe that I think we should grant him, you know, 20 feet of that road, um, just so he has access to his property, because I do see it being a burden to him and his property. And then my question is, is that still enough room for, you know, what Dykstras want to do with the property?
Hey, Matt, would you come up? Do you mind? Because that was my exact same question.
Yeah. I mean, I, I see Mark has more than the other two that have requested, um, the other two property owners.
Mm-hmm. So what does it look like if, uh, uh, Wagner's are, are given that 20 feet? What does that look like in your perspective?
Well, it, I, I think that would be okay, but in order for us to give up a bunch of our property, I guess we would like all of it for the trail. Um, yeah. Will it ever be developed? I don't know. We've offered to buy the property from Wagner, and, yeah, we just don't know what he wants for it, so, uh, we'd like to have that whole section and clean everything up, you know? I've heard several comments from the neighbors. You guys are doing a great job, and, so, I guess that's why we would like it. Do we absolutely need it? No.
But, so i- if-
But, so if the 20-foot was granted to Wagner and you guys took the rest of it, do you feel that would be acceptable to you?
We would like all of it if we're going to exchange for a bike trail going through our property. That's going to take up more space than what we're getting over there. And we have to build the road, or the path.
Right.
So, and I'm assuming all the cleanup is going to be at our expense as well.
Sure.
So, that's where we're coming from.
Gotcha.
If that makes sense.
Yes, thank you. Any other comments or questions? Sam, I guess my question's for you. What does it look like when someone has to illegally enter their property?
Well, there's a couple of ways to look at this. When this property was acquired by Mr. Wagner on tax sale, it was required with the same level of access that it has now. Todd Yule and I went out there this afternoon, and ironically, right as we got there, the property owner to the north, family member was dumping, was in the process of dumping a number of items onto Mr. Wagner's property. So, we all asked him to leave, which he did, which underscores the issue that we have with the mess out there. But, you know, and Todd, maybe you can weigh in and help out here, but there is, there is 20, 20 feet of access there. What Mark is, what Mr. Wagner is asking for is an additional 20, 20 feet, which would be your call if you wanted to do that. And keep in mind, you have, you basically have four interested parties now in this. You have the three letters on the agenda, and then you have the fourth of ID Excavating, which would, the Dykstras, which would do this in exchange for the trail. Did I answer your question?
Yes.
Todd, can you weigh in?
Sure. I mean, you're right on the access portion. The Wagner's property actually has 57 feet that borders Western Avenue. It does narrow up to 20 feet before it widens back out again. So, to their point, if they're going to have industrial access, it was like more than 20 feet before it gets narrowed. I don't think that means that they don't have reasonable access. It just doesn't mean they don't have the access that they would prefer to have. Maybe in fairness to the other people that wrote letters, of interest anyway, maybe it would be in our best interest to see what everybody's willing to do to the property. I think Mr. Wagner and his wife have some ideas for the property, and I think ID Excavating has some ideas for the property. We're not 100% sure what Mr. Barnes or Mr. Corserman have plans for the property.
I like that idea from Todd. Is it possible to be in contact with these people? Those that haven't. We've heard from a couple now of what their concerns or their desires. So, it kind of turns into the same deal we had with the nuisance properties. Give us your best pitch.
Mm-hmm. If I might.
Yeah.
I think that is a good idea. If we do that, I think it would be good, I think, if we gave it until the end of January or mid-Fbruary to get those proposals in, because Angie and Todd and I are, we're all headed into budget. And would really not rather have a series of public hearings on this at this time. It isn't urgent. What we could also then ask, and I think insist on, is that Mr. Corserman continue to clean up the mess that's on City right-of-way that has been there for a long time. He has been repeatedly asked by me to remove the junk. And today was over the top, and went out there with our public works director, and more junk was being dumped there. And that needs to stop. And so, I think, maybe we just give time for the proposals and then ask that the cleanup continue would be good.
Anyone else from the council would like to weigh in on this?
Yeah, this is Tom. I would say that I just, I don't feel like I got enough information to make an affirmative vote on this today. So, I would, I would support what Todd has laid out and Sam has supported with his comments just now.
I guess in the interim, do we have any legal mechanism or recourse to make sure that Mr. Wagner's property is being, is being free from getting all this junk dumped upon it? Other than asking us, ask him pretty, pretty please, will you not dump your junk here?
If I might?
Yeah.
So, Micah, perhaps you could weigh in on this? But I, I think that, you know, the city does have the ability to proceed with a municipal infraction. You know, there has been junk removed. What we observed today was about to be a step backward if we hadn't stopped it. So, that would be, that would be an option. But I think as far as a motion goes, I think if you wanted to just offer a motion to, to ask for proposals from all the interested parties to be submitted by the end of January to the clerk's office.
Yeah.
And then, and then set the expectation that you expect the property to be, to be cleaned up by then as well.
So, is there a, we can say that we expect the property to be cleaned up? Is that, is that good enough? As far as the type of language necessary to make sure this does not happen again to Mr. Wagner? Because, yeah, I guess that's the only, the only problem that I would have with, with kicking this can down the road a little bit is that we still can't, we can't just let this junk problem continue. I know you said that we were actually making good strides up until this, this step backwards. Hopefully, this was an exception and not the rule, but I just want to make sure, at least for Mr. Wagner's sake, that we are protecting his property. Micah, could you weigh in on that for us, please, if you've been following this conversation?
I am trying to follow the conversation. It is very difficult to hear some of you. What I think you're talking about is the ability to address the dumping on the 11th Street right-of-way. Is that correct?
Yes. Yes. Mm-hmm. Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you. The city does have some potential remedies. Littering, trespassing are all different possible infractions that could be pursued. And we can do that through a simple misdemeanor process, or we could do that through a municipal infraction process. Of course, will depend on the facts available to us, but there are potentially options.
Alright, thank you. Does that answer your question? Yes, sir. Thank you. Okay. So, Sam has suggested a motion. And I will, you know, make that motion where we look for proposals for the right-of-way leading up until, to be submitted by January 31st to the city clerk's office with the best proposal of improvement to the property. And we can make a more informed decision at that time. Okay.
Support.
Any further discussion or comments? Roll call, please.
Yano.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Barahona.
Aye.
Cruzer.
Aye.
Kent.
Aye.
Alright. Let's move on then to item 6F, the capital improvements planning. First point there, the city capital improvement plan. Have before you the annual update, updated five-year plan. Sam, do you have comments you'd like to make at this time?
This is the earliest that this has been brought forward in a few years. And so, it gives you an opportunity to look at this ahead of time. And we have kept the 15-year emergency services, CIP, updated as well. So, you could approve the five-year and the 15-year in the, in the same motion. The airport one will come back to you. At a future meeting, yeah.
Alright. So, we need a motion, a motion, and we'll get this on the table for discussion, a motion to approve the five-year plan and/or the 15-year plan. We can do it as one if you so desire.
I'll make the motion to approve both of them, the five and the 15-year.
Okay, do we have support for that?
Second.
Alright, now, any comments or discussion on those plans as they've been updated?
So, all we're, all we're approving is the plan, and we'll be utilizing that during our budgeting discussions, correct?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Cruzer.
Aye.
Kent.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Yano.
Aye.
Barahona.
Aye.
Alright, that motion carries. Moving on then to our reports. Sam, do you have anything further you'd like to share at this time?
Yes, I do. I have attached a draft, Angie and I have attached a draft budget agenda. So, if you have any questions, either speak up now or let me know later. But the dates will be the 21st and 22nd of January.
Okay. 21st and 22nd?
Yeah, I was going to say the 26th and 27th on the.
Oh, I apologize. I meant to say the 26th and 27th. Sorry. 26th and 27th.
Oh, it's on the agenda. It says 21 and 22.
Yeah, you click on it, click on it, it's the 26th and 27th.
Yes. Okay, so, yes. Point of clarification, it will be the 26th and 27th? Any other discussion or any question, I mean, any more question for Sam, I should say? Alright, so, keep that on your calendars. Anything else from you, Sam?
No, sir.
Alright, Todd, is there anything you have for us today?
Just one thing that I'd like everybody to think about as we get into budget time. You guys just approved the five-year CIP, which has a lot of high-dollar items on it, along with the 15-year, they both do. But one thing that is not in our five-year CIP that I think we need to be conscious of as we move forward is the potential of buying some more Lewis and Clark water to secure Sheldon's long-term water needs. I think it's further than five years out. It's probably closer to eight years out, but we might be asked to pull the trigger and say yes or no here in the next couple of years. So, I at least wanted to make you aware of the dollar amount. In today's dollars, it'd be about 3.2 million. If we took the entire allocation that we could, by the time that it gets here, you know, at 2.5% or 3% of the year, it'd be easy and play 4 to 4.5 million. So, I at least wanted to make you aware that that project would be coming. It's something that I'll be supporting at later dates. That's all.
Alright. Scott, I see you're listening in. Is there anything you'd like to share with us at this time?
No, there is not.
Alright, thank you. Kurt, are you with us? Yeah, you're there. You have to unmute. Is there anything you have for us today? Kurt Strauf.
Hey, Mayor, sorry about that. No, I do not have anything. I appreciate it.
Alright, thank you. Mike, is there anything further from you?
No, thank you.
Okay. Last and but certainly not least, Angie, anything from you? Alright. Did I get them all? It's in my list. Sometimes I forget. Alright, then let's move on. Councilman to my left, anything you have for comments? To my right, Tom or Pete, anything you'd like to share at this time?
Not today, thank you.
No.
Alright, thank you. The only comment I have kind of tags in on the governor's latest proclamation. Things are getting more restrictive. And the use of masks is encouraged. I would encourage everyone to consider others as well as yourselves in protecting not only yourself, but those around you. Use those masks when you're in public places, please. We see a lot more of them than we have been. We're doing, we're making good strides, but we're not totally all there yet. So, I know there's a lot of thoughts on use of masks, but it's a simple thing, and it can do some good things in the future. That's all I have, so at this time. Motion to adjourn.
Support.
Roll call, please.
Yano.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Cruzer.
Aye.
Kent.
Aye.
Barahona.
Aye.
Thanks, everybody.